All right, I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Education back to order. Thank you all for taking the trip. And we are, again, we have a quorum. And we're going to start with the indication and the pledge of allegiance by Mrs. Corcoran tonight.
We recite, "We beseech you, Almighty God, to bless this meeting of the Board of Education, so guide and rule over our hearts and our minds that all our deliberations and decisions may be in accordance with your will and lead to the advancement and welfare of the community of Stratford whom we serve. Amen."
... Pledge of Allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are going to have Bruce Claxton come up. Thanks, Bruce, from Benel, and give us our summary.
Good evening, everyone. For those who don't know me, I'm Bruce Claxton, the student representative for Benel High. Good evening, everyone. For those who don't know me, I am Bruce Claxton, the student representative for Benel High School. I hope you're all having a wonderful February, and I'm excited to share with you some of the wonderful activities that have been going on around the Benel community. Starting off with a few shout-outs, Benel on February 5th is proud to recognize juniors Madison Zorlow and Bianca Blachi for their success in the top two finalists for the Youth at Their Best volunteering program. Benel is proud of these ladies and all their hard work and their time volunteering. On February 7th, Benel hosted their annual winter pep rally. Earlier this month, on Tuesday, February 11th, the Benel Athletic Gymnasium was renamed and dedicated to teacher, coach, and former Benel Athletic Director David Johnson. Thank you again to Mr. Johnson for all his hard work and dedication over the years to the Benel community. Next, last week on February 20th, to commemorate Black History Month, grade 9 and 11th grade students were able to attend a performance by the band Boogie Chillin'. Boogie Chillin' encouraged students to keep the art of music alive through their sing-alongs and their interactive performance. The performance as a whole was a musical journey of African-American culture and history in the United States. Later that night, members of the Benel Choir, Sage, and Wind Ensemble performed at the Stratford Art Commission. All students put on an amazing performance and showed their exemplary talents. Also during Black History Month, a small group of students, including myself, helped coordinate Black History Month trivia. This trivia was designed to interact with students and inform students of the rich history of African-American culture. Questions for the trivia were sent out each day via student emails. Each day presented a different question and an opportunity to recognize African-American influencers. Next, throughout this month, the freshman class were given the opportunity to attend and observe different AP classes through freshman rounds in order to experience the AP classroom environment that are available to them next year, prior to their course selections coming up. Speaking of AP, congratulations are in order to AP Physics teacher, Ms. Kristen Recker, who is one of two teachers in the state of Connecticut to be selected as a participant in the 110K 10-Teacher Forum for the year 2020. She is one of 74 teachers across the country who have been chosen for this unique opportunity in the conversation of STEM teaching. Congratulations to Ms. Recker on behalf of the Benel community, and thank you for all you do for your students. Next, over the course of this weekend, both the Benel, Stratford Drum Line and Color Guard had a successful weekend in Newtown. The Drum Line placed second in competition with a score of 77.00, and the Color Guard placed second as well with a score of 76.39. Speaking of this, this Saturday, February 29th, the Benel, Stratford Drum Line and Guard will be hosting their 20th annual indoor show. I invite you all to come on Saturday and watch all the surrounding drum lines, especially us, Benel, Stratford. There are a few athletic updates at Benel. Our 2020 SWC Student Athlete Award recipients are seniors Reece McGlocklin and Josh Kaczynski. Our 2020 CIAC Scholar Athletes are Suzie Boisant and Joseph Lumizag. Our 2020 Benel High School Hall of Fame class will consist of Roy Williams and Zach Zurita. Girls' basketball qualified for both SWCs and state tournaments. They will be traveling to Sims Ferry to play the first round on March 3rd. Our February Athlete of the Month were Derek Jima, boys' basketball, and Merrill Wiesel for indoor track. Indoor track, senior Stephen Blake tied the 55-meter boys' indoor track record with a time of 6.27. Boys' indoor track broke the SMR record from a previous 352 with their new record of 349. Benel's own senior running back and safety Tyreek Smith committed to Pace University. And Benel's own wide receiver Tyler Stacks Burgess committed to Bentley University. And looking forward into the incoming month, or this week later, I should say, over the course of this month, the Benel Junior Class Council has been working hard on promoting the junior ring dance, their theme Fire and Ice. The junior ring dance will take place on Saturday, the 29th, at Vazano's Four Seasons. Next, Benel Deca's Rip the Runway auditions are underway. The talent show will be held on April 8th in the Benel Auditorium. Deca students who place for state will be able to compete in the international competition held in Nashville. The money will be raised to help them take that trip. Order forms for the class of 2020 senior hoodies have been sent out and conclude this Friday. The money will go towards prom. And lastly, via the Benel Skating Club, the pennies for Penguin fundraiser is underway. The fundraiser helps raise money for African Penguins who are extremely endangered, and if we raise enough money, and the class who raise enough money gets to meet them or stay home, which is pretty good. And lastly, Benel is proud to announce another memorable college acceptance. Kayla Sakumle was accepted into Vanderbilt University. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to sharing more positive news.
Thank you, Bruce. Melanie?
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Melanie Hernandez, and I'm here to share some news from Stratford High. The jazz band just returned from the National Jazz Festival in Philadelphia. After their win last year, they moved to the Elite Division, where they finished eighth in the country, so congratulations to them. On January 29th, SHS hosted the Captain's Breakfast for the SHS and Benel sports teams in a collaborative effort to foster a healthy rivalry and promote positive relationships for our student athletes. As a celebration of Black History Month, our students have selected a daily historical figure and prepared a statement for morning announcements to share with the school population. Stratford High School's first STEM night was a huge success. Allison Lucas and Jillian Barnich prepared a variety of activities for SHS and Worcester families. Special thanks to Linda Jedda, Allison Delbini, sorry, type of change, Delbini, sorry, and Bob DiLorenzo for attending. Thank you, guys. On Friday, February 7th, SHS held their winter pep rally in preparation for the Stratford High versus Benel basketball games, both boys and girls. And now Stratford High has 40 students taking part in the Yale Video Game Study. This is designed to be engaging and to help promote healthy student behaviors and make better decisions while online and in their personal life. Scheduling is in full swing for the 2020-2021 school year. The online registration system opened earlier this month for students to view recommendations and to complete course requests. Additionally, counselors have been actively meeting with students regarding their selections. Over the past two weeks, student counselors have almost finished all of 10th and 11th graders regarding their selections for next year, and this week, student counselors will be meeting with grade 9 students. On February 20th, Holly Frankwat from the College Place also came in to meet with seniors and/or their parents, just to check in on FASSA verification, to give out financial aid rewards, and to answer any questions. Last week marked the fourth consecutive year that Stratford High participated in Kindness Week. Activities were planned for each day that fostered students and their wish to spread kindness. And just today, the Stratford EMS came to Stratford High to certify 98 students in the new Stop the Bleed program. Stop the Bleed is a national awareness campaign and a call to action intended to cultivate grassroots efforts that encourage bystanders to become trained, equipped, and empowered to aid in a bleeding emergency before professional help arrives. Both our boys' and girls' basketball teams have qualified for the state playoffs, and our wrestling team has been crowned the SWC Patriot Division Championships for the 2019-2020 season. Our dance team, fresh off a second-place finish at the SWC Championships, is preparing for the state championships on Saturday at Hampton High School. So good luck to the girls, and congratulations to all of our student athletes. And lastly, the construction of our North Parade campus of the new Stratford High is on track for the opening of the first day of school in August of 2020. Phase 3, which includes the auxiliary gym, the fitness center, and the Alpha, is scheduled to be completed on November 1st, 2020. I hope it lasts. Thank you, guys, so much.
All right. Thank you again, guys. We are now going to have a presentation from the YMCA.
Hi, everyone. Thank you, Melanie, for naming the same height as me. First of all, thank you so much for having us here tonight. We do have a PowerPoint that can afford to get started, I hope. But really, our goal tonight is to just make sure that all of you know what the Y is already doing in the community, and that we can think a little bit more about what we can do to support both the school system and the community at large. So while our focus tonight... While that catches up, my name is Chelsea Cordiak. I'm the executive director at the Stratford Y, and with me tonight is Deanna Bogan, who is our childcare director. The rest of our staff, well, most of our staff are actually back at the branch tonight, receiving the QPR training from Stratford Partnership for Youth and Families and Community Services, so we didn't bring our whole team tonight. But fun fact, the Y is the largest provider of youth programs in the U.S. Across the country, we serve over 9 million children each year. That's everything from preschool to after-school, as well as day camp. And the Stratford Y's childcare mission is to foster the ongoing development of all children with quality, affordable, and accessible childcare programs, ensuring each child a positive, safe, and nurturing environment in collaborations with families, schools, and community. The Y after-school program is youth-centered, or across the country, Y after-school is youth-centered programs that leverage best practices from YMCA's across the country to help youth and families nurture the potential of children during out-of-school time. So what does that all mean? We are dedicated to bringing an after-school program here in Stratford that fosters each child's cognitive, social, emotional, and physical development through opportunities and experiences which focus on achievement, relationships, and belonging. We are focused on physical, as well as a physically safe environment, as well as an emotionally safe environment, and families are seen as partners, as well as other organizations in the community. So our desired short-term outcomes are all around achievement, relationships, and belonging. We want to make sure that youth feel that their efforts are valued and recognized, and staff have, staff build relationships with students, as well as students with others, with other students, and increasing transparency with current and potential community partners. At the Y, we always focus on a sense of belonging, whether that's at a branch or in our before-or-after-school program, and we want to make sure that youth feel valued by peers and staff and a part of the after-school team. So speaking about the after-school team. So this is the YMCA team. Sorry about the formatting issues that we're having. We use a different version of PowerPoint, apparently. So I've already introduced myself. I also have Deanna with me tonight, and I'll leave a copy of this for the board. On our team, we also have Ashley Fiedak, who's our Youth and Family Coordinator. She's a proud graduate of Stratford High School and Husettonic Community College. Melissa Bernardo, who's our preschool coordinator, and Amber Rua, who is our school age coordinator. Amber also helped start the student council at Eli Whitney Elementary School this year. So we are dedicated to helping out whenever possible, whether that is in our programs or in a new role for the Y and the community. So that's really small now, sorry. In the after-school program, we have head teachers and lead teachers, as well as assistant teachers, that help out, help in those areas of achievement, belonging, and creating a safe environment. And we also have consultants, so a nurse consultant, an education consultant, and a social services consultant, as well as a dental consultant, to serve as a resource for families, staff, and students. We have a lot of partners in this community, and we are super grateful for that. Stratford, actually, and as a part of the Board of Ed, the Stratford School Readiness and Childcare Advisory Council has been a great resource to us as we build our programs, whether that's the preschool or the after-school program. We have also received support from Team Vicky Soto, Get Help ACT, and we are licensed by OEC and through the state of Connecticut. Prior to hiring our team, they do two to three interviews with our leadership team. We check professional references, and we also do extensive background checks. Our required trainings range everything from CPR and first aid to EpiPen and inhaler trainings, as well as health and safety orientations and mandated reporter training. Not something that we like to have to do, but it's important that you know that your kids are safe when they're with us. Head teacher requirements are listed on that slide. There's a surprising amount that goes into a head teacher certificate, so when you see YMCA staff at the after-school sites, they are, they've gone through both an educational component, as well as an experiential component, in order to get that head teacher certification. So here in Stratford, we have a before-school program that starts at 6:45 a.m. We've recognized that that's when families need us. So we, if you're ever interested in seeing what we do, arrive at the YMCA around 6:45, and you'll see kids really excited to be there, bounding in with their breakfast, and they might be finishing up some homework, sorry, playing games with our staff team, as well as having fun, connecting. In the before-school program, we are currently at Johnson House, Wilcoxen Elementary School, as well as at the Y. And in the afternoons, we serve all of the schools, but lordship children are bussed to Johnson House, as of right now. What makes our program special? We know that what's most important to parents is homework help and a healthy snack, as well as social and emotional skill building. We have specialists in yoga and group games that come out, as well as we have a mad-science component, and we've, based on what we've heard from the Board of Ed, we have increased our STEM offerings. This year, we got a grant from the Connecticut After-School Network, as well as the Wireless Zone Foundation, and we have taken advantage of those dollars to purchase Lego. We do two kits, as well as Makey Makey kits, which were recommended by Sam Rosenberg. Thank you so much for your partnership with that. And we're looking forward to continuing to reflect what children are doing during the school day in the after-school program. So as the YMCA of the USA is a nationwide movement to make sure that we are keeping kids healthy and safe after school, they provide a lot of tools that we can use and take advantage of, whether it's figuring out different activities to do with kids, how to build an after-school program schedule, or how to spice things up in the afternoons, because we are based in the cafeteria for the most part, so all of us can understand that sometimes it can be a little repetitive, but our staff have all the tools to make it fun and exciting for our kids every day. The YMCA also offers training and resources for our staff, both online and in-person trainings are available to them. Sorry, this looks much better on my phone. Sorry. Grown book conversion is not so nice to us. Our desired long-term outcomes are that youth are more confident and capable leaders, that youth are recognized as unique, and as such, school-age programming is designed to develop them as individuals. The YMCA after-school is recognized as premier standard in school-age youth development programs, and that community partnerships and support networks are actively leveraged to create a more holistic youth development pathway. Our goal globally is that youth families in the YMCA play, learn, and work together as partners. So next, we have some testimonials from parents, which are really small, but they love us, I swear. And if you go to the next slide, maybe it'll work? Okay. So this is really cool data that was sponsored and analyzed, but not sponsored, but the Stratford Partnership for Youth and Families put out the, an after-school survey to all parents, and about 424 of them answered this question, how important each of the following areas are for children in an after-school setting? So we were really excited to see that the same things that are important to us are important to parents, whether they're in our program, at Sterling House, or another program in the community. But we are all focused on many of the same areas. Oh, good, the photos worked. Okay. So at the Y, we are for youth development, and that looks like more than just childcare. We have an awesome swim team, as well as swim lessons for our children as young as six months, all the way through adulthood. We also have a NIAC-accredited preschool. You can sort of see there they are with their gardens. And we also have a summer camp program, which we added archery to last year. That's what they're doing in that bottom left-hand picture. And we offer one-day and five-day vacation clubs, so when there's no school, the Y is still there for working families. We also offer a lot of different healthy living activities. We're more than just gym and swim. So we recently had a partner yoga class for Valentine's Day, as well as a heavy metal bar class. So we try to keep things interesting and new, so stay tuned on our Facebook page for some of those opportunities. And we also have a very active older adult population. They love their water aerobics, so you can see them in the bottom left corner, as well as lap swim available. And last year, we became a part of the CMAC Foundation's Race for Chase Youth Triathlon Training Program. So we teach kids 6 to 13 how to swim, bike, and run, in a free program for six weeks in the summer. We're really proud to be a part of that. And the final bucket of the Y is social responsibility. We take this role very seriously, hence we're here tonight. We recently had the students from Strive come and tour our facility, and they're going to start volunteering with us. They also got to take a Zumba class, which they loved. Well, some of them loved it. Not everyone loves Zumba as a general rule. We also have brought our Safety Around Water program outside of our facility to Short Beach movie nights, as well as other special events around town. Save the date for Saturday, April 18th, which is Healthy Kids Day. We'd love to have all of you there. It's a free day for the entire community to come to the Y and participate in the programs that we offer. I call it the Super Bowl of the YMCA, because we celebrate it nationwide. And we just completed a coat and winter clothing drive for Alpha Community Services, which is one of the 13 branches of the Central Connecticut Coast YMCA. So we collected coats in our before- and after-school programs and for our preschool, or from our preschool, and those will be donated to families in transition in Bridgeport. And we also have some volunteers from the high school who are learning to work with youth and providing mentorship in our after-school program at Nichols. So, oh, that's not what it looks like. Those are so funny, I'm sorry. But if you need any more information, or if you'd like to stop by, we're open every day but Easter and Christmas, so other than that, you can always stop by the Y. We're here for you, and we'd love to hear about what opportunities you might have for us as well. Thank you so much.
Okay, we are going to move into the public forum section of our agenda. Just as a reminder, we ask that topics discussed during the public forum section of the monthly Board of Ed meetings be related to items listed on the posted agenda. This is a practice suggested to us by CADE in an effort to ensure that these monthly meetings can be as productive as possible. Those addressing the Board should do so in a civil manner. To forum will be enforced. Just looking through some of, looking through the sheets, public forum is a section, not an agenda item, so if you did list public forum under subject, please email your questions to administration. So we are going to start with... Oh, thank you. And there's a three-minute limit. And again, I'm going to apologize for names, so when you come up, you just state your name again and your address. So Ms. Betsy, is that you?
I'd like to speak regarding the minutes from the last meeting and what you had just said about the agenda.
Oh, you need to state your name and address first.
I'm sorry. My name is Betsy Gutchen, and I live at 302 Bar Harbor Road. And my, what I'd like to discuss is what happens when we have an issue that's not on the agenda that we'd like to discuss? We do send an email, and we don't get a response. What is our, what alternative do we have? What exactly is this public forum that you speak of? And how do we go about getting our issues and, you know, addressed? And who determines what's important and what's not important? Can anybody answer that?
It's not a question and answer.
Okay. And the reason being is because I know that myself, along with many others, have sent an email regarding a certain member of the Board and how it affects the safety of our children, and nobody has gotten a response. And if we can't address this at the Board of Education meeting, when can this be addressed? I'm just getting stares, you know, and many of us are very concerned about the safety of our children.
This is an...
Well, no, I'm just, this, this is...
We will respond to you through, through email after.
Okay, because I did send an email, and I have not gotten a response, and I would appreciate that. Thank you.
My name is Kristen Bedell, and I live at 276 Laurel Street. In the past month, I've encountered a couple of situations that blatantly prove that there are students in the Stratford school system that reside in residences out of town. I realize there are many circumstances that could cause this, including divorce, custody arrangements, homelessness, et cetera. And I don't want to bring up specific names or locations, but would be happy to provide that information later. In light of discussions surrounding kindergarten registration, budget, and unusually high enrollment last year, I want to bring this to your attention, as other parents seem to be concerned as well. Each student costs a sum of money or tuition, and that's a basic number. On top of that, there are costs for services required by students, which we discussed earlier tonight. Being aware that some students from out of town require services of a varying degree, it makes me wonder if my student is getting all that he needs. I don't mean on a daily perspective. My child is happy, and he's thriving, and I'm thrilled with the things that his school is providing him. We've had an amazing experience so far, and I expect nothing less when my daughter starts school next year. However, as a... However, as a taxpayer, understanding that the budget request is an increase partially due to an increase in high enrollment and services required for students, I have to wonder if my child's needs, if my child needs a service, or his teacher needs supplies, or a copier needs to be fixed, if those things will be fulfilled, or if they'll be told there's no money. Some of the unfunded mandates, if some of these students were not in our school system, could be serviced. Perhaps we could hire additional social workers as needed to address the mental health issues that we discussed so often. I'm certainly not looking to deny any child's in education. If a student truly needs our town's services and our amazing teachers, they should get that, but not without justification. And certainly not without tuition paid, so that the taxpayers of this town are covering it. Please, in considering budget and the kindergarten registration that's currently going on, I would appreciate if residency became a top priority and checking if the students actually reside at their addresses that they're listing. Because it's important to the students of this town, the teachers that work and live in this town, and the taxpayers of this town, a lot of which don't even have students in this, in the system. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Manus Piccolo? I'll step down to you to the rest. Oh, she, okay. Ms. Bayou? Bayou, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I didn't recognize it.
Never said it out loud.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Bayou, and I reside at 441 Washington Parkway in Stratford. I have a simple question. I want to know how the Board of Ed can serve as the governing body for its employees? I'm speaking in regards to the personnel report. In my opinion, the Board of Ed has compromised the integrity of the Board, specifically violating the Code of Ethics and the Statement of Integrity in your bylaws, specifically Policy 9005A, Number Six. And you have criteria, HR policy, for hiring employees. So, I would like to ask for the recused member, a Board of Ed member, we all understand that there is an issue with, to recuse themselves on voting on the personnel report. I also am going to suggest a policy change to amend your policy and add a discipline of Board members, which includes a censor. This would be applicable for Board members who violate the rules, regulations, and policies of Board of Ed, interfere with the orderly and efficient operations of the Board, or act in any ways that are contrary to the best interest of the school district and can be subject to the vote of censure by the Board. A censure vote is an expression of disapproval concerning an individual member of the Board of Ed. Thank you, and I'm going to hand out my, my statement. Thank you.
Ms. Manus Piccolo?
Hi, good evening. Teresa Manus Piccolo, 406 Will Cox in Stratford. Normally, I like to parent from home, but today I'm having parent at your meeting, and I apologize for that in advance. I actually looked through your agenda and the agenda item with the CADE policies. If you could look at the substitute teacher page, I'd take issue with it. It goes over substitute teacher rate of compensation, employee things. It never has a mention of the standards, expectations, evaluation, or removal of a substitute teacher and why. It says that that person could be 40 days or more in a child's classroom. We don't ever address on this page what standard we're holding that person to. Currently, my daughter has a substitute teacher. The teacher has showed teacher incompetence. It is quite evident. I'm a teacher myself, as well as an administrator. I don't take this lightly. This person's put my daughter in danger emotionally. My daughter is damaged from this person. My daughter requires a 504 plan at school because of what was allowed from this person. I asked for this person's removal. I asked when they would be unemployed. I have received no response. I've had to FOI everything about my daughter's education this year. I have gotten nothing back. I have received inaccurate grades. I've had meeting after meeting about grading. I've had meeting after meeting about bullying and harassment. My daughter was bullied and harassed, and it was allowed to continue because her substitute didn't know that she should have filled a complaint out. She didn't know to fill out the paperwork. She didn't know to stop the problem. I take issue that administrators did not address this in a timely manner in the building, at the upper level. I had a meeting on the 3rd of February. That same day, I had gotten a phone call from my daughter's school telling me that my daughter had injured herself, possibly. My daughter went to a pediatrician and told them that it was school. And cried. And it was school. School did this to my kid. So, I take issue with the fact that you have no mention whatsoever about how you're going to address this. I, I take issue with the fact that you have not addressed the issue that's currently going on. I take issue with the fact that my daughter has been in a classroom where her first reading lesson happened in February. I take issue with the fact that my daughter is in a classroom where the teacher doesn't even know what she's supposed to be teaching. She's handing out checklists, calling them blue bricks. She's teaching fourth-grade units when it's fifth grade. I take issue with the fact that I talked to multiple parents in this district, and I've been in through this town, and I have talked to multiple people, and all of these people are complaining about the grading system being wrong, are complaining about the grading system not making sense, complaining about Power School not being to address the issues there, having no idea what's going on day-to-day. I have no idea if an enrichment program exists. It did last year. I don't know if it does this year. There is no communication. That's fine. Thank you.
And like I said, if you listed "Public Forum" as your subject tonight, that is a section. So, if you could please email Administration, I'd appreciate it. All right, we are moving on to the executive report. Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to announce that we have members of our seventh cohort, a Parent C, here tonight. Would you mind standing, those people that are part of the seventh cohort? We appreciate all the work you're putting in just to learn about how things work in town and your concern about schools. So, we were very, if you're not aware, we were very excited when we applied for the first grant, for the first cohort, and received the grant, and that was so successful. And you have a couple of our organizers sitting back here, too. I see you also. It was so successful that we said, "Let's try it again." Now, I've, in other districts, never seen a grant awarded more than one time, and we are on number seven. So, what a great job, and this is obviously very valuable for parents. So, we're glad to have you here tonight, and I look forward to the opportunity to answer your questions directly. So, some of my thunder was stolen, because you heard about the, going on at Stratford High School today, the project Stop the Bleed Program. And some other awards. Second Hill Lane Elementary, Edward Rueda, was recognized by CAS for Excellence in Art. Also at Second Hill Lane, Herman de Verger, was recognized by CAS for Excellence in Music. And also, we have the Stratford Street Sculpture Show planned for summer. And a number of our teachers are, very talented art teachers and their students are involved in that. At Worcester, we have students who are, are going through. They are being doctors, wearing their white coats and learning to experience what it might be like to be in medical school. And that is a new, a new program for them, and they are enjoying it a great deal. I also wanted to say, we have been very fortunate. We've been working with the State of Connecticut. As you know, that preschool slots are difficult to come by. We have been funded for, by the State, for 12 more preschool slots in full day and four more in a school day. So, we've been able to open up for a few more kids, and we're really excited about that. So, things are moving right along, and those are key things that we're dealing with right now. So, I'll turn it back over to you.
Are there any questions to Mr. Robinson, about your report? Seeing none, Mr. Malloy?
Thank you. Overall, our spending, as we discussed, and our financial review committee is going along a similar pattern as past years. Our salaries are in decent shape, but what area we need to focus on are CIAs for special ed. Right now, we're in the red, but we're hoping some of the salary savings will offset that. We're hoping to see a cost avoidance for utilities if the weather continues to cooperate with us. And we're also focused on special ed outplace students and the costs that are associated with some increased number of students there. Transportation, nothing new to report. We're, we're operating as we have been, and no significant issues to report. Our enrollment is holding steady. As always, there are students that come and go, and there's definitely a small increase with special ed at this point. That's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Malloy? We just had finance before this, so a lot of questions can answer there. Moving on to the consent agenda. So, the first item for action is the approval of meetings from January 27. Motion made by Mrs. Rodea.
Do you want to take the consent agenda as a whole?
Oh, yes, actually, let's do that, just because we had chairmen this month. So, we had discussed all these items already. So, do I have a motion to accept all three? Motion made by Mrs. Rodea to accept all three items on the consent agenda?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Fajella. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 6-0. Items for action, proposed policies for adoption. Again, we did have a first read-through at our chairman's committee meeting. Is there any discussion, or do I have to... I need to have a discussion.
I'll, I'll move to accept the proposed curriculum adoption.
No, we're on the policies.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was ahead of you, I guess. So, I will, I will let, let you know. Are you, are you making a motion? I'll second it.
All right, yeah, I'll, I'll move the proposed policies for adoption.
Great. Motion made by Mr. Fajella for, to accept the proposed policies, seconded by Mrs. Rodea. I have, I have a question. Just, I'm curious. Is there an evaluation? There are probably, there are more policies, right, on substitute teachers than this one?
Yes, yes, yes. This is just added. This is, this is an adjustment or from the old policy, but it's not the entire process.
Correct, okay. Any other questions or discussions? Down there? No? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
opposed? Sentions? Passes 6-0. For a motion for proposed curriculum?
Guess I'll move, which I did previously, the proposed curriculum for action adoption, forwarded to us by the Board of Education Committee.
Motion, motion made by Mr. Fajella and seconded by Mrs. Wiltsey to move, to accept the proposed curriculum for act, for adoption, excuse me, of those five courses that were reviewed in curriculum and also were reviewed at the chairman's committee this year, this month. Discussion?
I just, when we did discuss these, that curriculum, the superintendent did say that there was a, I guess, certain amount of professional development that's going to go along with these. And I'm just wondering, for, at a future date, if you can get some idea of a possibility where a teacher in service prepares them for this, these particular curriculum changes or adoptions?
Just only because, the only thing I do know is the multivariable calculus curriculum was in the, we just had seen that in, listed under curriculum rating, recently. Even just by Dr. Gata, but the other items, no, we haven't yet. All right, Dr. Robinson?
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Mr. Fajella was asking about professional development required for the courses, because Dr. Robinson said, had said that there would be some necessary as we move these courses forward. And I just said at one of our budget meetings recently, we had discussed the cost for writing the multivariable calculus curriculum, but that Dr. Robinson would get the rest of that to him.
Thank you. And I will try to use the microphone and share it with the board member next to me. Normally, we have our own microphones.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Sentions are proposed? Passes 6-0, great. Okay, item six. I'll undertake a motion to move forward the itemized excrement of expenditures?
Excuse me, I have a question. So, this is the budget for the upcoming school year.
The 20, two... Correct, that we spoke about at finance on Thursday. Well, the Medi-Finance Committee meeting.
I know. I have my four. So, I would like to motion that we present this forward, but with...
I can't hear you.
So, we're talking about the upcoming budget proposal, you know, that's going to be submitted to the town council. And I would like to motion that we include that an audit is part of this going forward. I'm not sure what, how to, you know, what, what that motion should be, or the, the request. But this is what I'm asking, is that before we submit it to the town council, can we put in that we want?
Just because I'm a little new to this. If we do a second motion for that, Janet, if she wanted that on the, I mean...
It's going to change the amount of the, you're, you're changing the amount of the budget.
Right.
Yeah. It's another $50,000. So, you're changing the amount going forward. Now, let me just clarify, can I clarify?
Yes, please.
Because, because there are two audits that take place automatically. We are audited by, we are audited by, when the town is audited, we are also audited. And then we are audited in, in terms of the ED001, which goes into the state, the state audits. So, you're not asking about either of those. You're wanting, asking for a, a third audit?
Well, I'm asking for an audit that will remove some of the distrust that we've had here as a board, as a district. I think, you know, we have a bunch of new members on here. None of us want to move forward with this history. You know, some of, even through the four budget workshops that we've gone through, you know, there has been confusion in terms of what some of these items are. Like, there isn't transparency into the numbers. And, you know, we've talked about an audit for a while, and I really think we need to figure out a way to work it into this. And, you know, we're talking $50,000? Like, that's, how much are we saving on electricity? Like, it's, you know, we talk about that. Like, there's an unusually warm winter. Like, we're saving in other areas. So, last year, there was money left over in the budget. I think we can fit it in here.
I think that this may be something that would have to go back to finance then.
That's what I would like, can I make a motion to table this item and discuss an audit? And there's some other, perhaps, some things that need some discussion. There's some questions still not answered. So, when do we need to have this budget?
Then to the town council next week.
By March? By March 10th or 12th, yeah. So, can I make a motion to table?
She made a motion.
She needs a second.
I will second Andrew's motion.
Okay, so, right now on the table is a motion to send this back to finance for further review. Correct? Okay. Okay, any other, well, for further discussion, then we can discuss what that will include and change. Because I think there are other questions besides Janice's. Correct. Okay, so, is there any more discussion? All those in...
I have, first of all, I believe it's the 5th of March, it has to go to the town council.
It's the 5th of March, it has to go to the town council. Okay. No, it doesn't, it doesn't. All right. We can, we can forward this, we can vote on this and forward it to the council. And we can still reconsider the amount. Well, I think we have to get it to the council because there's a deadline. But it doesn't mean we cannot add to it, go to finance, discuss it, discuss the, discuss the issue where we have a little more time to do that. We can always add that to our cost.
I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. Is that okay? At 8:23. Okay, I'm going to call meeting back at 8:28. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to send the budget, proposed budget back to finance for further review. We're going to take a roll call vote, starting with... Starting with Mrs. Cupe? In favor of, yep, so either yes in favor of or yes. Okay. Yes. This is a motion to send it back to finance, correct? Mrs. Wiltsey?
Yes.
Mr. Dean Lorenzo?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodea?
No.
Mr. Fajella?
No.
No, board votes no. Passes 4-3 to be sent back to finance for further review. Finance meeting, probably tomorrow night. We'll have to see who's available, so...
You can't post it, can't post it yet. You can't, do tomorrow night. You have 24 hours.
We're not going to be able to.
The budget won't be presented to the council in time by this vote. And that's part of the problem. We could have actually put an addendum and said that if there's any money to be carried over, we could ask council at the end of the year for the 1% to be used toward an audit. So, I mean, that's something that we could have done.
I can't hear you.
Can you repeat everything you just said?
What I said was that we could have asked, if there's any carryover at the end of the year, the board is allowed to ask the town council to retain 1%. That is the number that was current. And we could have used that 1% toward an audit. But this, you know, we've had multiple workshops for finance and this was never even on anyone's radar. So, to have it come up tonight when we have less than a week to get this to town councils so that they can evaluate it and make their decisions, I find it disheartening, to say the least, because there are other avenues. They're not guaranteed, but at least then, now we know and could have been put in the budget. But there's other things that I think that are higher priority.
Any other discussion, Mrs. Porgren?
For me, this isn't simply about what Ms. Cupe was talking about with the audit, but also the night that we voted to pass this through to the board. I, it went very quickly. I didn't have a chance to voice my actual vote and I would like to go back.
Everyone was asked, though.
But it went, I mean, it went, it went very quickly. I know I'm not the only one, so...
It passed 4-3, right?
It did, yeah. Any other comments or...
I just, I'm concerned that this is going to cause problems with the town council. I wish that we could consider the vote again before we go ahead because, I mean, I have no objection to looking into this and putting it in the budget. But we're going to, we're not going to be able to address it with what is necessary before the town sets the mill rate. They need to know this information. That's why I would like to send them what we have here and add an addendum to it after we get this information. I'm sure that not only with the 1%, but with the contingency, we could cover the cost of any audit. Yeah, I think it's what Ms. Cupe is requesting is an operational audit, which is fine. But I don't want to lose out by not sending this over to the council so that they can know what to put into the budget and can go ahead with what they have to do to set the mill rate. So, I would hope that we could get a vote, number one, to change this vote. And then, number two, have a motion made to go ahead with getting the information necessary of the cost of an operational audit and funding it. It would be two things. Because I really don't know, right now, there's no councilman here and I don't know how, what impact it would have on the council.
So, so, so pretty much, this has been an ongoing issue for six years.
Yeah, but the thing is, it wasn't addressed in our budget workshops, so it was never put into this budget.
But it's not due until March 5th, so that just means we got to work a little harder to get there.
March 5th is next Thursday.
Okay.
We have to, we have to get a cost for it. And do you get a cost without going out to bid? You have, once you get the cost for it, then we have to have a finance committee meeting. Well, we have to have a finance committee to address the need for a request for a proposal. It has to be sent out, that takes time to get it back. I don't know what the cost would be, so I don't know if we can get away with not going out to bid.
I don't disagree with you, Vinnie. By the same token, if it's an amendment, we need to get this done. We ran on the premise of getting this done for six years. And it's two years and nothing's been done, the public, everybody wants it, so...
But I'm not saying don't get it done.
I understand, I'm not saying...
Do what needs to be done to get this budget over to the town into the timeframe that we have. And in addition to that, make a separate motion tonight to investigate the cost of an operational audit. If it's necessary to go out to bid, go out to bid. And then, send that as an additional cost to the council and/or fund it through contingency. I mean, if the cost is 50,000, if it's 25,000, I don't know. It's 100,000. But whatever, I'm sure the money can be found to do it. But we don't know what we're asking in terms of cost.
I don't disagree, Vinnie, I just think that it's going to continue to be put off and put off and put off. So, I hope something comes...
What happens if the council says, well, you people don't know what you're doing, we're going to cut your budget because we think this is what you should be doing.
They might do that anyways.
Of course, they might do it, but why gives them an excuse to do it?
I think there are two separate issues, though, here as well. I think there are some unanswered questions in addition to this request. So, I think that there's going to be a lot of back and forth. Mrs. Rodea?
Okay, what I'm going to suggest is that we go back and revisit the vote to move the established budget forward to the council, okay? And then, in a separate motion, I think that we should put forward that we're going to put out the, ask for the RFP, RFQ, whatever it is that we need to do to do it properly, to get the cost. And then, once we know what that is, which will be, we'll put an end date of when we want it by, okay? So, that way, we're not going to let it slide through. Because that's what happens sometimes is there's no sunset. And then, if there's money, as I said, at the end of the year, we can ask the council for that percentage to cover the cost of an operational audit. And I don't think that that's unreasonable. That will also get it done probably a little bit quicker so that we'll be prepared for next fall's preparation of budget season. So, at the end, you know, budget season starts at the end of October, we start working on it. And I just think that that might be the best way to go. It's still done within the calendar year, but for this particular budget, that should have been brought out long ago.
What makes me nervous about that is the what if? What if there is no money at the end of the year? What if this gets put off again?
We can go back to the council and ask for them to fund it. And they can say yes or no.
I'll explain my vote, I'm not comfortable with 3.49 and I see questions still unanswered and trimming still possible. So, I'd like to see that lower before it goes to town council, so...
So, unless there's a motion made right now, then we're going to move forward.
And it can only be made by someone who was dissenting.
By the dissenter, so that would be me?
No, by a yes vote.
It could, so a motion can only be made by a yes vote to amend this motion or change it in any way? I don't think that's going to happen, so we're just going to move on to table items. Is there anything under table items that I would like to take off the table?
I'd like to make a motion to take residency verification report off the table for discussion.
Motion made by Mrs. Wiltsey. Need a second? Seconded by Mr. Dean Lorenzo. Okay, residency verification report is off the table. Last month, we had asked for, well, starting last month, we had asked for monthly reports on residency. So, I don't know.
And you have been receiving some spreadsheet.
Yep.
And so, I'm just giving you an update since January 27. Seven cases remain open as ongoing in process as Mr. Embro is conducting his investigations. January 28th through the 31st, total of 11 cases assigned. One case residency confirmed, one case unenrolled due to residency. Nine cases remain in process. Case investigated, February 1st through current, three cases assigned, one case unenrolled, two cases assigned. May I say also with this, because I heard some statements tonight regarding this, we do have an anonymous tip line. Please use it if you're aware of students who are probably not residents, you're not sure. Please call our anonymous tip line, you will find it on the, you will find it on our website and we really would appreciate it. You need to know that in two years, the tip line, we've only had about six tips, so I would appreciate very much.
Dr. Robinson, did the other board members receive this report? Because we, we did receive this report at the Board of Ed Town Council meeting and I don't know if the other board members received this report.
No, but I'll get it to them.
Great, because I know for those of us that were at that meeting, we did have a couple of questions on the format.
Right.
That we'd like changed and some clarifications based on that, but it'd be great if the other board members did.
In addition to that, I would just like to get an answer to the question that I asked at the Board of Ed liaison, Town Council liaison meeting. Did we get clarification of the report method? I know that you were looking into, they were all listed as administrator, but if we had other areas of reporting via hotline or teacher, have those been distinguished?
Right. The bulk of those came, when they came from a school, they got automatically listed as administrator coming from the school. Very often, that comes through the school secretary and so that was automatically listed as administrator.
Okay.
Even if it comes from a teacher, it would typically come from the school secretary.
Just to be clear, since October 15th of 2019 until February 5th of 2020, nothing on hotline?
I can't say nothing in hotline for sure. I'm just saying that I know, I checked with Mike and it's about six phone calls that came through in the hotline in the two years it's been in existence. I don't know the timing, so I don't know if it's on there or not. I'm not personally doing that list.
Dr. Robinson, is it possible for someone else to have access to the calls that go in on the hotline besides Mr. Embro and yourself?
The two people who have access and it must remain confidential is Teresa and Mr. Embro.
We couldn't, you know, there's no one else like a police officer in town or a board member?
We actually, confidential information can't be shared outside of the certific, you know, people who are certified receive that information.
So, a police officer wouldn't fall under that category?
No, they would not.
Just the certification? What is, yeah. The administration?
Yeah, someone certified who's followed, the school district employee who's a, FERPA takes precedence over this. And FERPA means that you can't identify a student, a particular student with their location.
We're just trying to think of other ways to...
The only way to investigate a residency complaint is by identifying the child and the address.
And that's why we have the anonymous tip line and they can do that. But it's not being utilized.
It's just difficult to, you know, follow up on things or do things without, we're kind of like, you know, up against a wall, right? Okay, can you look into something, but we can't look into something. Oh, who has access? Oh, well, only these people have access. It just feels like there's a...
Well, you know, why don't...
It's difficult.
Why don't, why don't, we've had, in the past, we've had Mike Embro come in and talk to the board so you can get all your questions answered. And why don't we do that?
That's great idea.
He's done that in the past. And then, you can see what, you know, how long it takes to do the investigation, what he has to do to do that investigation. And I can hear that, I can hear you're needing to know more about it.
And let's have him do that, because he's the one that does it. I will say, though, once everybody sees the report, it is a big step in the direction of reporting. Yes, it is.
Can we ask that Mr. Embro attend Board of Ed meetings on a monthly and deliver this type of report?
Certainly, if that's what you'd like.
Any other questions regarding the, regarding residency? Do we need a motion to put it back on the table? Motion made by Mrs. Rodea to put it back on the table?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Fajella, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Sentenced? Anything else from table items? All right, new business for information, we had kindergarten, full day. I was looking for more information on the first day of kindergarten. I know that when, on the very first day of school, everyone except kindergartners go, the kindergartners only go for one hour on the first day. And I know it's a very big inconvenience for parents, especially with multiple children. So, I didn't know if, I just wanted to leave a little bit of a discussion and get a feel for how board members feel about this hour and if there was anything we could do, anything we can do about it. So, that was it. I don't know if you were aware that kindergartners only went one hour on the first day. But, I mean, my daughter started kindergarten this year, so it would be of no benefit to me. We already did the hour thing, but it was, it was a big point of discussion for all the parents. And, I mean, I know I left work for the hour and had to get childcare and all that stuff, which is, you know, what you have to do. But I also feel like, you know, the rationale behind... know, the rationale behind it was, it's a long first day for them, you know, but we did do a lot of activities prior to the first day of school to get them comfortable, so we're just looking to get a feel for board members and if it's something we want, a discussion we want to continue to have, just if we want changes made for the fall.
I'd be curious to hear from a teacher's perspective, a K teacher...
Definitely.
...what their thoughts are on the situation. It seems like maybe even half-day might be more productive for everybody, but I can't speak to what it's actually like in that classroom.
And it is counted for a, a school day for the kindergartners, you know, so... Any other comments on it?
Would you like me to do something in terms of a committee of...
Would you like me to do something such as a committee of teachers and parents to have a discussion about that, kindergarten parents and kindergarten teachers?
That would be great.
Okay, and then get, see what they, I, you know, see what the rationales are and what inconvenience it might be for working parents and...
And I know a lot of other school districts don't do that either, so...
So I'll get a committee together, and then we'll make a report for the board.
Great.
They will make a report for the board.
Okay. All right, moving on to committee reports. Curriculum Committee, Ms. Corcoran and Ms. Kupi.
Thank you. So Ms. Corcoran and I met on February 11th, our first curriculum committee meeting. We got to meet all the new members of the committee. We had some really, really good discussions. We had both the middle school principals there, and they were very, you know, forthcoming in just how they've been working together to sort of unify both of the middle schools, and they're working very tightly in ensuring that, you know, the environment, the culture at the schools are conducive to their mission. And we talked about, you know, the past process of unleveling and the success of that, and, you know, we have those courses that were proposed. One of them, I think, offers college credits, like four credits to UConn, which was great. And, you know, I think it's Harold Geist, you know, went into detail on some of the math courses that were proposed, and, you know, it was good to find out, like, our district is offering a really good amount of AP courses and things that our students need when applying for college. So, I mean, it prompted more questions for me, which I'm jotting down for the next meeting, like, okay, well, how are they, you know, scoring for one-year screening and testing for college? How far, like, they're eligible for that? So more conversations to happen, but it was really, really good dialogue, yeah.
I agree. Thank you. The Town Board of Ed Liaison Committee met on the 19th.
I'll speak to that. We had really good attendance with board members as well as town councilmen. There was really great discussion about working as a team to really bring our town to the next place. We spoke about budget, and residency was a hot topic. We all agreed that moving forward, we're looking for a top-notch education for our children while being very respectful to being fiscally conservative and protecting our tax dollars and our taxpayers, so I think it's going to be a very productive committee moving forward.
We had Chairman's Committee this past Thursday, and we reviewed the agenda for tonight. Finance, Mrs. Rodea?
We had four workshops. We had four workshops where board members had opportunities to ask questions to the administration and make suggestions of changes and additions, deletions that they wanted to see. I thought that it was very productive. There's always going to be more questions, and we can keep working on that. We do have a deadline that we have to meet, and we have a week to do it, so it's going to be a very busy week for us, because it's going to require another finance meeting, and it's going to require another special board meeting. So it's going to be a busy week. The finance meeting that we had prior to the meeting tonight was also very productive, and, you know, it was productive. We got a lot of information and, again, you know, opportunities for things to be discussed. The next finance meeting is before the next board meeting for the actual committee. We will have to set a date for the special one.
Dr. Robinson, do we do that while we're, can we do that later this week? Or the next couple days? You mean, or we have to do that tonight?
We're already getting away from it.
We're going to need two meetings. So we'll need the finance meeting, and then we'll need the board meeting, special, and they'll both be special meetings.
Okay.
So we could, can we do that Thursday night? We have to have 24 hours.
Okay.
So it'll be one day, four days or something.
Kate, anything, I'm skipping over PTA council meeting because they did not meet. It was canceled this month. Anything for Kate?
No, I, no.
CES, Mr. Fajella?
There was not a regular CES meeting this month, but February 19th, we did have a meeting of the CEA council by telephone to vote on applying for about $118,000 in a grant to set up a statewide special education transportation database that towns could avail themselves of. And what this will do is to help school districts track special ed transportation, as well as to possibly save each of the towns $10,000 to $18,000 a year to provide some type of collaboration in the special ed transportation. And we were talking at the finance committee, transportation costs are very expensive for special ed. So that was voted to apply for the grant. The other thing I wanted to just remind the board members is they probably got an invitation to, on March 28th, dinner to raise money for CES's foundation. It'll be held at Mill River Country Club. I've got four people that are going already, so if any other board member wants to join, join me, I think they should have gotten individual invitations from CES, and they'll save $5 or more if we get a table together, so just a reminder. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything for town building needs?
Nothing on town building. On the Stratford High renovation committee, some good news. During the Stratford High committee, the team is talking about adding on a artificial turf field that is about half-length of a regular field, which would include all activities for the kids, ranging from gym to sports activities, so that's still in play and in works. And right now, they're just, you know, we're talking about the situation that revolves around it with fencing and so forth.
Committee appointments and assignments, there's nothing new. They've all been done. So we have upcoming events. March 10th is curriculum. Vinnie, did you just...
I just wanted to add to that, because I'd always forgotten, but there is a planning committee meeting on March 5th.
Plan, planning on March 5th? I'm just repeating it.
Hopefully.
So we have curriculum coming up. We have a Town Board of Ed Liaison Committee meeting coming up, and we are going to move into executive session right now for review and discussion of our BOE goals at 8:54. Thank you. With, I'm sorry, executive session with board members and Dr. Robinson. Coming out of executive session at 9:30, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn by Mrs. Kupi. Second?
Second.
And Mrs. Rodea, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.